So, some of the things that may cause changes in your assessment if you already have a house and everything's all set, um, if you do some new construction to it, if you put on a kitchen, or care to build a new house, um, any type of new construction will change the assessed values. And one of the other things that will do it is any type of permit activity, the public domain permit, to put up a shed, garage, in-law apartment, anything along those lines, you will come out, take the measurements with the information, it will be added to the assessed value of your property. And one of the other things we do look at as we're going through the sales verification to qualified sales to determine market value, and one of the things that we do is if we notice there's any inaccuracies in the data, we will correct that through looking through the MLS, um, through conversations with the home buyer, the home seller, the real estate broker, any and all resources we can use. And another reason would be a citywide update, because they want a 21, but the citywide update can be statistical, which is what we do state, so it can be a complete measure and list, which is currently being talked about for one in the near future. A complete measuring list would be a visit to every property, measurement of every structure, and an at least an attempt to get into every property and update as much data as we possibly can. Under RSA 758A, we are required to do this at least once every five years. Can it be a statistical update, but we have to do it once every five years, and we can do it more often in the future? Part of the process, or the main process, is data collection. If we go out without data collection, we don't have a lot of information, but we go out, this is property, we pick up data collection, and we then take that information along with our market analysis, which we look at during the sales, uh, sales that we look at, we run through, make that into a new data collection, add that to the property, uh, assessment record if need be, and determine the valuation of your property. One of the other things that we do look at is the highest and best use analysis. Generally, in residential property, highest and best use is your single-family home, your small multi-family home. It doesn't happen very often, but an example of something not at its highest and best use would be an old factory building, an old brick, such a place, sitting on five acres of land, that land is worth more than a green building. So, that'd be a quick example of something that's not at its highest and best use. What impacts, uh, the value of your property? First of all, location. We all know it, better the location generally, the more value your property has, higher market value, higher assessment. Some of the other things that will, uh, would affect the value of your property could be the size and possibly the shape of the lot. You know, if one person has an acre, and the other person right next door has an acre and a half, they're gonna have a slightly higher assessment than they have in that land. The shape of the lot may affect the value of the land, if you and somebody else has an acre of land, theirs is next square, it's a nice, yours is long, narrow, triangle lot, because of the shape of the lot, the land value may be less, depending on what you can do with them. Parnish, although we don't have a lot of, uh, bodies of water here in Nashville, but if you did have a, uh, water pump property, um, it would be much higher value than being on a busy road. These things, again, we don't run into too much water pump property here in Nashville. Age and condition of the improvement. We have a home, we've done very little with the property, can maintain it, upgrade it, it may have a negative impact on overall value of your property. If you maintain it or improve it, then it may have a positive effect on the value of the property. If you need a kitchen, it probably has increased the value of the property. Quality of components value that we use. Again, with a ki- with a kitchen example, if you put in a Renitong pops, it says, you can't mic it on the box. Renitong pops carry a higher value, they are more valuable, you're gonna have a higher assessed value based on the components that you put in. Some of the other things are special features, uh, in grounds of property, like an ass and value, you have a custom fireplace, then, then kitchen, those types of things will affect the value of your property. Some external influences that will affect the value of your property, be it negative or positive, uh, if you live next to the landfill, they have an effect on the value of your property. If you're near the water and have water access, if you're both in the lot, or something along those lines, it would affect the value of your property. If you live right next to the highway, you have a highway going by all the time, you see the walls up there, that's why they're up there, that can affect the value of your property. Now, after you've received your essential tax bill, if you do not agree with your assessed value, you can file an abatement with the municipality. That abatement needs to be in our hands by March first, it may also be first March, by March first, but March first is the deadline for filing, so you can send the tax bill by March first, by March first, when you find it, you file for an abatement with the local government, the municipality. Grounds for your abatement, if you review your property record card, there's some inaccuracies to in the property record card, you file for an abatement, the market come out, get the data corrected, and then go to minute. The most important one is the overall valuation of the property, if they're with the property value to the market, so do the research, do some qualified sales, and file an abatement by March first. So, if you file for an abatement, and you still agree to disagree, it would be to deny it, or we didn't understand the value, or it was being denied because you did not have the unsecured value of the property. You still have options, you have options, have the state levels, appeal to the state. You can appeal to the Board of Taxing Land Fields, or Superior Court, either the other, not both. The one thing you need to be very careful of is their deadline is September first, and depending on what venue you choose, their rules for the deadline are different. One may accept the fourth month, I'm not sure which ones which, but if you get to that point, you definitely wanna check on that and make sure to be exact. Now, I will turn it back over to Louise, the administrative staff.
My name is Louise Brown, I'm a member of the administrative staff, and I'd like for you to go through our responsibilities on track. Um, I will go through an overview, and then other staff members will go through in detail about what we do with the property. So, what we deal with is property transfers and updating records. So, we transfer ownership due to a deed being reported at the registry of deeds, or court documents coming from Superior Court. We review deeds, plans, and GIS maps for accuracy and legitimacy, but we also process name and address changes, which is important, they're pushing the taxes, so I just wanna make sure those bills go to the property owners. Our ongoing, ongoing duties include assisting taxpayers on the phone and in our office, processing exemption and credit applications, preparing for board of assessor meetings, which is a bi-monthly process, data entry and QC, which is quality control, any work that's done in the office is always checked by a second person, reviewing and processing plans and caveats recorded at the registry of deeds, processing property location changes from the planning department or fire department, scheduling appointments for assessors, responding to emails from the website, and we're also responsible for updating the information on our website. We do have a board of assessors. In Nashua, the board of assessors has the responsibility to establish assessments, approve or deny any applications for abatements, tax deferrals, exemptions, and credits. The City of Nashua does offer credits and exemptions, this is a list of what we do offer, which includes veterans credits, exemptions for certain disabled veterans, elderly exemptions, improvements to assist persons with disabilities, elderly and disabled tax deferrals, blind exemptions, disabled exemptions, solar exemptions, and we do also offer charitable, religious, and educational exemptions, and other staff members will go through that more detail than I am. Tax credit versus tax exemption. A tax credit is deducted from a taxpayer's tax bill. A tax exemption is deducted from the total assessed valuation of that person's tax bill. So, what exactly does that mean? This is an example of a property tax bill. This applicant has a veteran's tax credit. We can see that the $500 credit, which is subtracted from the total bill, appears on the tax bill shown. It is clear what the person is getting, a veteran's tax credit. How an exemption is applied, so this would deal with a disabled exemption, a blind exemption, an elderly exemption, or a solar exemption, which is on the left side, which is where your assessed valuation shows up. So, whatever exemption the person is getting, this is where it's going to be subtracted from. I will turn this over to Amanda, who will talk about veterans credits.
Hi, I'm Amanda Mazero, I'm gonna take a minute to talk about some veterans credits and some exemptions that we have here in Nashua. Nashua offers five different veterans credits. In order to qualify, the veteran must claim New Hampshire as their primary residence. They also must own and occupy that property here in Nashua. The veteran must also have served no less than ninety days of active duty and must have their discharge. We take these applications year-round, and all that is needed to prove this is their discharge papers and your New Hampshire ID. And these benefits range from the $500 credit to full exemption. These benefits may apply to a spouse or their surviving spouse. Nashua also offers an elderly exemption. We have an elderly exemption for our residents that are over sixty-five years of age as of April first of the past year. In order to qualify, they too must own and occupy their properties and have claimed New Hampshire as their primary residence. They have to have resided in New Hampshire for at least three consecutive years as of April first. For our senior citizens, there are also an annual income and asset limit. For the elderly exemption, income from all sources, from married or single applicants, cannot be greater than $50,000 a year in their assets, but not including that home that they live in cannot exceed $150,000. These applications are available after the start of the new year, and they have to be filed by April fifteenth of the past year, and the exemption amount for the elderly is age-dependent. We also have a disabled exemption, which is similar to our elderly exemption, but it's for those under sixty-five years of age on April first, and the disabled exemption is $194,000 off their assessed value. As with our other credits and exemptions, they too must claim New Hampshire as their primary residence, they have to own and occupy that home, and the disabled applicants have to have lived here for at least five consecutive years on April first. To qualify for this exemption, these residents have to be receiving Title II or Title XVI benefits of the Social Security Act. For them, the asset and inca- asset and income limits are slightly different than our senior citizens. For a single applicant, it cannot exceed $36,000 for the year, and a married couple cannot exceed $40,000 for the year. Excluding the value of their home, their assets cannot exceed $125,000. And again, the applications are available after the first year, must be filed by April fifteenth. The last exemption I would like to tell you about is those who have been deemed to be legally blind by the New Hampshire Department of Education's Blind Services Bureau. With the help of their doctor, they get a letter from this department, bring it to us, they too have to own and occupy that home, and be New Hampshire residents by April first. These applications are accepted year-round, and those who qualify get $94,000 off of their six-year. I would like to continue on. Good evening, the, um, exemption I'd like to talk about is transferring of an exemption or a credit. A property owner who has a credit or an exemption and purchases a new property, ha- yeah, can qualif- can transfer the credit as long as it's done before December first of that year. Um, and basically, everything just transfers over to the new property, but they do have to come in and fill out the appropriate paperwork by December first in our office. The next exemption that we offer is a solar exemption. Anyone having an operating solar system as of April first of that year can apply for a solar exemption, um, an assessor will go out, assess the value of the exemption, of the system, and then they can come in and file for the exemption, which would be in the amount of the assessed value of that, um, system. Again, the deadline to apply, April fifteenth, just like any other one. Unlike the other exemptions, the applicant does not have to occupy the home as long as they own the property. And then the, another exemption is the exemption for improvements to assist persons with disabilities. The applicant must own and occupy the property as of April first. They do not have to be the disabled person utilizing the, um, modification to the home as long as that person resides there, so let's say their mother moves in with them and needs a ramp to better enter and exit the property, then an assessor would go out, assess the value of the ramp, and then notify the residents that they can apply for the exemption, and the exemption would be given in the amount of the assessed value. It could be a bathroom modification, it could be an elevator put in the home, as long as it facilitates living in the home for that, a resident living in. And again, that must be done by the property. Getting the word out, we have information scattered around the town, the city. First of all, back of your tax bill is on every single one of them. We have information packets in our office, applications are also available, um, at the tax collector's office, on our website, workshops are held at the Nashville Senior Center, and, um, the Mobile Home Parts, and we also spoke at the Mayor's Senior Summit. And we also have information on the back table back there, if you're interested in anything, any of these credits or exemptions. And from here, I would just want to.
My name is Cheryl Lawley, the department coordinator for the city. And first, I want to tell you about the elderly and disabled tax deferral. If by the due date of end of the year, an elderly or disabled taxpayer still has a balance due, they have the option to file in for a tax defer. The applicant must be a resident and living in a neighborhood of their residence. The applicant must be sixty-five years of age or older, or if under the age of sixty-five, older than thirty-six.
Good evening. Got a call to order, a special meeting in the Board of Aldermen. Today is Monday, June seventeenth, at seven eighteen PM in the Automatic Chamber. The Honorable Michael B. O'Brien will preside, with the city clerk, Patricia Piazza, will record. A prayer will be offered by the city clerk, and following, pledge of allegiance by Alderman Jettie.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Philoso, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with learning and justice for all.
To those who are good folks at home, unfortunately, there was a little bit of delay, we needed a quorum. Fortunately, everybody that can't make it has shown up, and we're very ready to go. Uh, can the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen. Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman woman Malizzi Gola. Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. And Alderman Wheelshire. We have eight members present.
And I would be amiss to say that we did have a sickness excuse. Several of the Aldermen do have ward meetings that are concurrently going on, and they're attending that, so everybody not present is properly excused. Thank you. Okay, before us this evening? The clerk, I do. Do you usually read it? Yeah?
Um, address change petition, sheet sixty-seven, lot forty-seven, Seventh Amherst Street.
Okay. At this point, I'm gonna call testimony in favor, and then testimony in opposition. So, we'll take it by, you know, order, all those that have business before the board that would like to testify, testify in favor, please step up to the mic, introduce yourself, state your name, and your current address, and give us your testimony.
Okay. Hello, everyone, my name's Chris Wheeler.
Excuse me, you could raise the...
Uh, it's all right.
Or you could hold it in your hand if you're more comfortable, you're a tall fella.
Do a mic drop afterwards?
Uh, I would like it, but the TV guy might not.
All right, I'll keep it, keep it simple. No, I'm Chris Wheeler, this is Jen Ray, and we're at Seventh Amherst Street. We bought the home, uh, back in December, and it was completely remodeled, refurbished. Uh, we're hoping to change the address to Two Abbott Street. It's, uh, I don't know if you've seen the paperwork yet or not, I don't really know if I have much to add, um, but it's on the corner of Abbott and Amherst, our driveway's on Abbott, and we put our barrels out on Abbott, and giving directions to people coming to visit us. It's Abbott, and, um, it just would make our lives a much more simpler, uh, to be able to, to have Two Abbott, and we met the local man-in that delivers on Abbott, and he said that used to be Two Abbott years ago, and he used to deliver our mail. Uh, Seventh Amherst, as you know, it's a busy street, there's nowhere to slow down, so there's nowhere for a car to pull into, and, uh, so there's a lot of people that get very confused. Package delivery is a nightmare, Amazon Prime doesn't know what's going on, so, um, putting packages out in front on Amherst Street, it's exposed, and, uh, I don't know, did I, anything else? All right, uh, so, please let us change the address to Two Abbott. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further testimony in favor? CNN will move to testimony in opposition. Anybody has testimony in opposition, please step forward to the mic. Second call, testimony in opposition, CNN. Again, we call testimony in favor. Anybody else have additional testimony in favor? CNN will go to testimony in opposition. Anybody have any other testimony in opposition? CNN will consider the matter closed, have Seventh Amherst Street. We'll now move on to clerk.
Address change petition for sheet eighty-seven, lot eighteen, Thirteenth, Thirteenth Second Street, Nashua.
Very good. Again, if anybody has testimony in favor, please come forward, step up to the mic, give us your name and your address, so that we can record who is speaking. Thank you.
My name is Paul Thieler, and I'm the property owner of Thirteenth Second Street with my partner. We've been, uh, we've owned this property over thirty years, and it's always had four separate addresses, and now we ran into a problem where it's not listed as individual addresses. It's listed under twenty, uh, is under Thirteenth Second Street, A, B, C, D, so we'd like to officially change him to the addresses that we've been calling it, uh, for the last thirty years. In the past years, we've had mail, utilities, everything else has no problem going to the individual addresses. The times we've had emergency services going there, they get to the right address, so I, you know, personally, we don't see an issue here in terms of problems, uh, no other, it's only contained to our four-unit buildings, so it doesn't affect anybody else within the name change. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have additional testimony in favor? CNN will open up to testimony in opposition. Anybody have any testimony in opposition, please step forward. CNN will recall testimony in favor. Anybody have additional testimony in favor? CNN will close that and move to testimony in opposition. CNN, nobody's come forward, testimony in opposition, will consider the matter closed, on the address change for Thirteenth Second Street. Alderman Tenza, do you have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn is an order. We will adjourn at nineteen twenty-five. Uh, we do have additional, going right into an infrastructure meeting, so you're all welcome to attend, they're lots of fun, okay? Plus, just to make sure, I do have a quorum, so I will probably need an Alderman at large just to, if one of yous could stay, that would definitely help. And, uh, I think that's it to our TV man, we're only gonna just basically shuffle people around, so we'll stay, we'll mute the mics, but we'll stay active. All right, thank you all.
Yes. Oh, you did. Yeah.
... to understand the way that is done. Okay, I'm gonna try, turn it over here, turn it over here. So, that's a little bit of an overview. Um, we tried to fit in just enough information for one evening, um, and we understand there's a lot more information that we could give you, um, without making it a three-hour session, and we probably, probably lose most of you. Um, a couple things, you can come into our assessing office anytime, during the hours of eight to five, there are computer terminals in the office, and I can tell you, our administrative staff will walk you through, um, helping to navigate those terminals. I cannot see what great customer service they provide of residents, uh, in the area we're blessed. As far as the assessment of your property, if you feel that there is a problem with the assessment of your property, please assess how, contact our assessment department, you have one of our very knowledgeable assessors come out and assist you. They're there for you, they work for you every day. And so, we thank everyone for coming. What we'd like to do tonight is if any of you have a question on your property, please let Louise know, she'll print your property card of your property, and the assessors have tables in the back, and they are happy to sit with you and talk about your property card. Uh, does anyone have any questions pertaining to the presentation that they would like to ask of one of our assessors or our admin- our administrative staff? Sure? On your property. Okay, great, we'll help you then, we will help you. All right, having seen no questions, um, we're gonna end this part of the program, um, and our assessors will be available out back. If you have questions on, um, exemptions or credits, one of the administrative staff will help you here on the stage. Have a nice evening.
Okay, we got mics. Very good, and we're all set. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Committee of Infrastructure. Tonight is Monday, June 17, 2019, at 7:32 in the automatic chamber. I apologize, we had some technical difficulties, so we're all set. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman at Large, Michael O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Tom Lopez is not here. Alderman Jen Schmidt is me, and I'm here. Alderman Ernest Jettie.
Here.
And Alderman Ken Gidge.
Okay. Also in attendance, we have Alderman Clay and Alderman Dowd. But out of the committee, I do declare we do have a quorum. Okay. When the clerk is ready, we'll get to public comment.
Here we go.
Okay. This is open public comment. If anybody has any discussion on issues that are up on the agenda tonight, such as your petitions or anything, if you want to come and speak forward, if you felt in the earlier meeting where you gave enough testimony, feel free that you don't really have to come up. You can void on that. So, any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Andy Proman. I'm here to talk about the petition for the facade easement, and if you'd like, I could speak to it at the time it comes before the committee.
Okay. When that comes before the committee, then I will call you up, Mr. Proman, and then you can bring your point to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, CNN, petitions.
Petitions. Address change petition, Sheet 64, Lot 47, 7 Amherst Street. Mr. Chair, I recommend granting the petition.
Okay. If, committee members, if you, and others, if you look up, we have up here 7 Amherst Street. As what we heard by the petitioner, I have my nice little TV that's up here that's supposed to, so I could face you people, but can't see it. So, we're going to bear with me as we work up here. This is 7 Amherst Street. And as we see, the petitioner wants to be considered an Abbott Street address. And as we look at it, I guess we could pretty much come to some conclusion that the front of the building looks more appropriate with the Abbott Street address as compared to 7 Amherst Street. Now, in looking, additional testimony, this goes before the fire marshal, the police department, GIS, and Sarah Marshon from our building department. Mr. Wilkins, a planner, and it goes for our legal department. And they have looked at the petition for 7 Amherst Street, and they recommend that the petition be approved. Ms. Marshon, do you have any other further that you would like to add on this matter? Any discussion on the motion to approve the granting of the petition at 7 Amherst Street?
Have a question. Is it, is it clear that the driveway is not on, on Amherst Street? It's on the, yes. And that's where your mailbox is? Yes, thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Yes, this is in my ward. I can attest to the fact that any deliveries on Amherst Street, or even trying to slow down within that area, is very, very difficult. There's a lot of different intersections coming into there, and to be able to change to that with their, with their door, with their entrances and mailbox and so on, is I would strongly recommend this.
Okay. Further comment? CNN, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of granting the petition for a seven address change from 7 Amherst Street to Abbott Street signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? CNN? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, additional petitions.
Address change petition, Sheet 87, Lot 18, which is 13 Second Street. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we deny this petition.
Okay. We did hear from our friends who look at the address change, and one of the problems with it is it didn't meet the 911. And could you type in, while I'm explaining, would you, will the clerk be so kind as to bring up 13 Second Street as I explain it? And if we can get it up, it's on the corner of Second Street and North Garotten. And looking at it, it would be several buildings. It would be, if I understand this correctly, it would be 11 Second Street, 13 Second Street, 7 North Garotten, and 9 North Garotten. Okay? The North Garotten is on another street. Yet, I can see where there's difficulty with it, but what it is, it comes down to the police and fire with the dispatch, and where are they going to basically go? So, if we can...
It does say 13 Second Street, doesn't it?
Yeah, but you might have needed a gap between the 13 and Second.
Just draw Second Street.
Yeah.
It's really hard to see it from saying.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, you got it, yeah.
One, three, space.
Take your ti... Oh, no, you, you missed the one. You don't have to put street in. Take your time.
You don't need street? Okay.
No, one.
You do, because there's a Second Street and a Second Avenue.
Yeah, hopefully it'll all come up. All right.
Is it all right now?
Yeah. Let's see what comes up.
Well, there you go.
13, okay, can you X that? Out there? Oh, no, not the whole.
What, what happened?
That's it. Yeah. There you go. All right. There we go.
Oh, that's too funny.
Yeah, no, you're doing fine. I tell you.
Okay, which is it?
Okay. This is 13 Second Street. Don't bother. The one I have my mouse over.
Click again.
Okay. So, basically, the petitioner is saying approximately where my cursor is here, that would be 11, and then somewhere in this vicinity would be 13. Okay? And then looking North Garotten Street, where this is North Garotten Street here, we will have back here number seven would be right about here where the cursor is. Okay? And then in this little L back here will be 9 North Garotten. I can see with the majority of structures in this particular neighborhood, their addressing is going by Second Street, not so much by the North Garotten Street address. So, I can see some of the problem that our friends are bringing up. And what they have said is the request before you is not compliant with the current New Hampshire E-911 standard. The standard states that one primary structure requires one number addressing. If there are multiple primary structures, each building will require its own number. Further, in small multi-unit structures, including duplexes, townhouses, the sub-address should be alphabetical. And so, therefore, it's this committee's recommendation to continue moving forward in a way that will not create an non-compliant situation for future residents. We recommend that this petition be denied for the above reason. Any discussion on the motion before us? Okay. The motion before us by Alderman Schmidt is to recommend denying the petition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? CNN, the petition is not granted. Further petitions?
Okay. I move to refer the petition to the planning board and table pending and recommend, recommendation. That would be for the petition to release the facade easement.
Okay. Mr. Proman, since we have the motion, I'll let you come up and state, please.
Mr. Chairman, again, Andy Proman, attorney with attorney and proman of Nashua. And I have people with me tonight, our clients, Alimark, a limited liability company, John Rendell and Camille Lebos are the members of Alimark. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I didn't quite catch the opening comment from Ms. Schmidt. Was that a referral to the planning board?
Yes. Could the clerk please restate her motion, please?
To refer the petition to the planning board and table pending recommendation.
Just procedurally, would it then come back to this committee before going back to the Aldermen?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, what we're doing, I don't know really what you're going to do. There is a previous lien when, when they first started this in 1982, if I have that correct from...
You do.
My homework on, on the matter. There was an agreement that the current structure would remain the same. It seems now there may be some changes. And the current structure may, as it sits right now, be in some form of jeopardy. But we don't know what is going to necessarily replace it. Okay? So, what we're doing is re-referring this matter now to the planning board, where that maybe you might be able to bring up some of your concerns or ideas. And then, it will be determined with the planning board, and then ultimately come back to the decision of this board whether to accept that petition and make the recommendation for your petition.
That being the case, Mr. Chairman, would I be better off coming back to you when it does come back after the planning board?
I would say so, because I think right now, you're going to be explaining to this particular board, I think that you would feel more within your realm to be before the planning board, to have this discussion where they're more attuned and looking at that previous lien for that particular structure, and then work that out at that particular time, and then, you know, be able to work, work that matter out, and let the planning board refer it back to us.
Okay, one final question.
Absolutely.
When would your next meeting be?
Our next meeting scheduled for this time, I think, is July 24th.
July 24th, huh, okay.
Now, I don't know how this is going to jump on piggyback with the planning board meetings. I really don't know.
Well, I was going to...
Oh, excuse me. We have our Sarah Marshon. Could you please come forward, please? And I'll refer someone. Please have a seat. Thank you. Director Sarah Marshon.
The planning board will be, it is on the planning board's agenda for this Thursday. The 25th referral goes through, so it could be to them this Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, the delay from this Thursday to, out to July 24th is problematic for my folks, because they are hoping to move along with their plans to sell the property. And I don't want that delay to jeopardize.
I understand that, but I'm going to really say, taking into looking at your petition, right now, there is a previous lien that was agreed to in 1982. And by referring this to the planning board, may not necessarily fit within your timeframe, but I, would be my personal recommendation, if you had something to bring forward on it, that would be for your best interest. Other than that, if we yank that, then we may have a motion before us to, to deny the petition.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, I'm trying to graciously tell you that your nose is right above the water right now. Swim.
I could taste the water. Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I thank you very much for your time. I have another matter before the board. I'm going to stick around.
You're welcome to stay, Mr. Proman. Thank you for your attention. Alderman Jettie, please. It is open for discussion.
Would it not be possible for us to, not knowing how anyone else might vote on this, isn't it possible for us to vote to recommend final passage contingent upon the planning board's approval?
I'm going to take a stab at it, and then I'm going to see if I answer incorrectly to throw it to Director Marshon. But the thing is, right now, we have this property, and just again, to rehash it. In 1981, the owners of 42, 452 Amherst Street, they converted the existing house into the Country Tavern Restaurant. A condition of approval was imposed by the zoning board of adjustment, but the use of the variance to allow the restaurant was to maintain the aestheticness of the building. Okay? If we do anything other than this recommending that it go before the planning board, could jeopardize the standing agreement that, that is under on that building. Am I correct in?
I'm not sure about that. I, I think the petition is here before you, is you own the ownership rights of this lien, essentially, and they're asking for that to be deleted. The, going to the planning board to get their advice is part of your normal process, and that is how you do business when you have something related to a planning board matter. The applicant, regardless of this easement or not, to do something else with the property will have to go before planning board, and will have to show what needs to be done, if this easement's in place, what needs to be done with this property, and then get your written permission to do that, or it would need this easement eradicated. So, they will before, before planning board either way.
Right.
Either with the easement in place or not.
Alderman Jettie.
So, when I hear you say that the, the facade easement, if I'm using that term correctly, was imposed by the zoning board of adjustment, do you also have to go before the zoning board of adjustment or not? I don't know.
If I may.
Attorney Proman, yes.
Two points. First, to answer Attorney Jettie's, or Alderman Jettie's question, the answer is no, because the board of, the zoning board does not have authority to deal with real estate-related matters in terms of granting or taking easements away. That, that lies with the municipal body, the Board of Aldermen. The zoning board have very limited roles under state statutes. Mr. Chairman, if I may, the problem, we're happy to go to the planning board and explain what we're trying to do. But we have no set plans right now to present to the planning board. That's, that's premature. That's, that's very premature. We're just looking to get the city's permission to release the easement so that we can talk to potential buyers, so that we can come up with plans to go to the planning board. We're happy to go Thursday and explain where we are, but we really, we have no plans of any substance to present to the planning board at this time.
And I can understand that, but in our, in my homework and my studies and discussing this with legal and everything, to give up such a covenant, when I say covenant, such as this, saying that the facade would stay the same, is something that the city just doesn't want to give up. wanna give up. This is a very old structure. It has some historic value to that particular neighborhood. And right now, I gotta think as the city. You know, I understand it's not germane to the other three corners that are around it. I understand. But before I relinquish our control over that, I really would like to hear from you and your stakeholders, basically, why should we explain it to that board? Why should we relinquish the control of that facade as, you know, as it looks right now? In other words, I'm gonna take the position that I would recommend this board to protect one of the gems of the city. It is an old building. If we relinquish that, then I don't know what, you know, your stakeholders wanted, to be a gas station or, you know, anything else, but, you know, it's something that I feel we should guard at this particular time.
Well, excuse me, that being the case, then I believe your motion was to table. I would go to the planning board and come back to you.
Right. And I think that would be the better, at least it gives you some things that you'd be able to—
Sure.
—move it around. And then, I'm not saying you're gonna fall upon deaf ears again. I mean, it'll come back to us with a recommendation at that particular point and we'll have more study and more stuff that we can sink our teeth into and pour over, perhaps, if we're fortunate for that.
And I'm sorry, one last time, the date for your next meeting?
Is July 24th.
July 24th, okay, all right. Well, Mr. Chairman, members, thank you.
Mr. Proman, thank you.
Okay, I'm sticking around.
Thank you, Mr. Marshant. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion to refer the petition to the planning board and table the pending recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? The motion is tabled. Okay, new business?
Unfinished business, we have none. New business resolutions, we have Resolution 19-146, authorizing the granting of easements to Penachuck Water Works, Inc., for the construction of a utilization and maintenance of water lines. It was also assigned to the planning board. Favorable recommendation was issued 66.
Yes.
I move that we, final passage.
Okay, there's a motion for final passage and looking at this, the discussion, everything seems to be in order with this and there's a recommendation that we may pass it. Alderman Dowd.
Just to, I was at the planning board meeting when they approved this. This work is allowing them to be able to shut the tower down at Kessler Farm so they can rebuild a new tower. They have to be able to supply water to the people that normally get it from that tower, so this work is critical to that and they wanna do it as quickly as possible. And the planning department, the planning board had no problem with it.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Further motions?
Next, we have Resolution 19-146, authorizing the purchase and sale of city land at 21 Pine Street, map 77, lot 17, and land of Public Service Company of New Hampshire, DBA Ever Source Energy, at 3 Pine Street Extension, map 77, lot 2A. Mr. Chair, I recommend tabling our 1947 pending recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board and the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Also—
Well, no, that's good, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. When the clerk did person, you said 146, it's 147.
147.
You did state it in your motion, so we are good.
Thank you.
In discussion with Director Cummings, he stated that this is not a time-sensitive issue. He'll be able to attend the next meeting of the, next meeting to address once the planning board and the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee has a chance to review it and make a recommendation at that particular time. And again, it will be brought up at our next infrastructure meeting, which is July 24th. So taking into Mr. Cummings' request where it's not time-sensitive, I think Alderman Schmidt's order, motion is in order. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Further resolutions?
Resolution 19-148, amending the authorization of sale of land on Bridge Street and Sanders Street. I move to table our 19148 pending recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board.
Okay, again, in communication with Director Cummings, this is not a time-sensitive matter and we'll be able to attend the next meeting of infrastructure on July 24th and bring us up to date on this particular project. So where it's not time-sensitive, I think Alderman Schmidt's order is, motion is in order. Any discussion? Alderman Jettie.
Attorney Proman is here on this as well. He was out of the room when it was introduced.
Okay, yeah, Ms., Attorney Proman, we did call 148. If you wish to speak, please come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you again. Andrew Proman with Prunian Proman of Nashua.
Could I just interrupt, Mr. Chairman? Could I just interrupt?
Yes.
Just to tell Attorney Proman that there's been a motion to table this as well pending and referring it to the planning board and pending their approval. With the, with the advice that this is not time-sensitive, I don't know. I just wanted you to know what was said while you were out of the room.
Thank you. Well, again, we were hopeful to make some progress tonight, but at least I'll get home early. I've dinner. So I'm happy to do a short presentation on what this is all about. Perhaps it waits until I come back in July.
I will leave it up to you on that decision. The reason we are granting this is Director Cummings actually requested a day change for this particular date, but Director Cummings is, as we all know, a very busy man. So unfortunately, he could not make it to this evening's meeting. And like I say, he has stated to me, as what Alderman Jettie has stated, not so much time-sensitive. And where the planning board will review it and make a recommendation, it may be best to discuss it on the 24th, to which, you know, you can redo your presentation at that particular time, but I don't want you to go home saying, geez, I did nothing tonight, so. So Counselor, it is up to you, whatever you wish you want to do.
Well, I will just, let me just say this. Unlike the facade easement, which I know is causing some folks in the city some angst, I think this committee, the Board of Alderman, will appreciate what we're trying to do with this Renaissance and Bridge Street project. We're trying to add additional apartments, we're trying to make a payment in lieu of a field. I'll leave it at that, but I will see you folks in a month.
Okay. Well, as you leave us, you have no other matters before the board. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Dowd, excuse me.
I'm not a member of this committee, but typically, we like to have these items go before the planning board, so if they put any requests, changes, or stipulations when it comes back and we approve it, it can go to the full board. Otherwise, it's gonna be bounced back and forth and will just take a lot longer.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you all again.
Well, Mr. Pro, Attorney Proman, I don't want you to go away, Phil, that your presence here has been enlightening and we thank you for coming and sharing your time with us. Thank you, sir.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Right.
Okay, there is a motion before us to table our 19148 pending a recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Further resolutions?
We have Resolution 19-150, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a license agreement for a parking area off Artillery Lane, Nashua, abutting map, lot, map 63, lot 45. I would recommend infinite postponement of our 19150.
Indefinite?
Is, yes.
May I ask what that means?
You said infinite, I think it's indefinite.
Indefinite postponement is the city's way of saying ITL, inexpedient to legislate.
And infinite is much longer than indefinite.
It's way longer.
Yes. Alderman Cleat.
Yeah, as you can see, I'm the one who put this one, put this one forward. And the reason for it was the business, Forsier—
24— Excuse me. I'm gonna have the clerk, could you just bear with us?
They're not on Artillery, I think they're on—
24 Merrimack.
Merrimack, yes.
And is there any other member of the public, Alderman Cleat, that is here with this particular petition?
I, truthfully, I'm here.
I will allow you to please come forward.
24 Merrimack Street.
Hi.
I don't see it.
If you wanna sit—
Are you representing Forsier?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Adjacent, that'll be quite fine. I'm gonna say that we are joined by you and can you state your name, your address, and relationship to this, please?
Yep. My name is Elizabeth Hartigan. I'm an attorney at a Goddardsmann and Hollis and we represent Forsier Construction, who has put forth this license.
Very good, thank you.
So this is the land we're talking about.
Okay, yeah. Now, I think what we'll do is, Alderman Cleat, now that we have an update, please.
Thank you. The reason for this petition was, while I had some angst about it, I really did, because I felt that it was setting up precedent of something that could be coming down through the city and so on. His business, the way his loading dock is, which you can't see through that picture and so on, it made it very awkward for his vehicles to come in and out of. He did clear some of the space there prior, and I will be very straightforward and honest, but prior to the city saying, go ahead and do it. We came in, we spoke to him about it. I don't know whether or not any fines were levied or anything to that nature, but Director Marshant had come in, taken care of it. What he cleared actually was just brush and actually made the place look a little bit nicer. In discussions with, I believe, the attorney and Director Marshant and so on, they decided that to be able to use this property would be okay. The first decision was perhaps a lease. The problem with the lease was it gave a finite amount of time. So in other words, it was a one-year lease, two-year lease, six months lease and so on. I believe it was decided to go with a license agreement because a license agreement could be nullified at any point in time if, in fact, this was not working and it was not beneficial to the city. It's a very small, small piece of land that you're talking about, right to the back of it, on Artillery Lane, so you see where the building is, correct? And you see the cars that are parked alongside of it. It's right where you're, exactly, right where your pointer was. That's the small parcel of land that you're speaking of.
It's not actually a parcel, is it?
No, keep going up there, right there, right there, yep. That piece is all part of the whole thing. That's why we're not giving it to him, we're not leasing it to him, we're going to allow him to use it. I believe that's what the license agreement in fact says, that he would be able to, he would be able to use that property for his trucks for loading and unloading. It's not, he's not under any circumstances, is he getting the property? He's not keeping the property? And if for any reason we feel that this is not beneficial in any way to, that it's hurting the city, it's creating parking issues, the license agreement can be stopped and nullified at any point in time. So the fact that this goes into indefinite postponement, he's already been using the property, in truth, we create an issue.
Okay. Is the Alderman aware that there have been other petitions by people on Artillery Lane for licensing and that they have been denied in the past?
No, and no one has actually come to me. I don't know if that's happened with, since I've been in, but I have been talking with Director Marshant and so on and I do not know. I am not aware of any of these other license agreements. That's why I say, I had major anxiety about this right from the beginning because I was afraid it was gonna set a precedent. There are a number of people that are looking for it, including another person who wants kind of an easement on cities right away that goes from Amherst Street to Artillery. But it's a pedestrian walkway, an unpaved pedestrian walkway. So, you know, I don't wanna see the city get into any kind of a bind, but the issue is that Mr. Forsier is using it, we will have to stop him from using it. And not that, not that we shouldn't, if that's, if that be the way the board feels, then that's what it should be done. We are affecting his business in his being able to deliver and load his trucks and so on. And that's what the whole thing was for. So I am unaware of the others, so.
And not to debate and—
No.
And not to be unkind.
Right.
But if we do look at previous, we see this as, we see this as untouched.
But it isn't—
Now, is that the condition that the facility is in right now?
Right now, right now, it's about as clear as you see it there. Prior to him clearing it, there were, there were briars and just brush in general that he cleaned out and cleared, including, I believe, there were construction items and so on there. And when I say that, I mean more like cement and concrete. So he cleaned, and glass, I guess there had been lots of glass there too, he cleaned all that up.
I used to be very good at this when I was on the fight about—
You're looking for the parcel map or are you looking for that?
I'm looking for our most current shooting.
Okay, so go down to the bottom where the map is.
I'm down there, hold on.
Where that little arrow is.
Yeah, I know. My wife doesn't like this term.
Oh, yes, let's—
That's 2015.
Okay, 2015, let's look at 20—
It's 2017, yeah, 2017 would be the most current. Yeah, that's where you're looking at. I think you can go, you can go all the way back to like 2013.
It does sometimes—
There is, there is, there is one, but we may not have access to it, but there is a current. In other words, I went to the property today as part of my homework to look at this.
So you saw, yeah.
This is, it wasn't hot-topped, but it was definitely worked on. There was construction of a wall, a retaining wall. There was put-down hard pack—
Yes.
—stone that is there. There is part of a, well, a receptacle that looked like part of a dump truck. There was about four trucks parked there, okay? At that particular moment in time when I was there. And all this was done without a permit.
Absolutely. And I agree—
Attorney, do you have any reason, any explanation why no request of a permit was brought to the board or to the building department?
No, I don't. That was sort of before we came into the picture.
Okay.
And I agree, and that's what started this, this was started this whole ball rolling, is that Mr. Forsier took it upon himself to do all these things. At the very beginning, I was adamant that, basically because of that action, that this would not, this would not be. After speaking, and I'm sorry that Director Marshant is gone, but after speaking to Director Marshant and many discussions, Attorney, I don't know if you were in all those discussions with Director Marshant and so on.
Actually, so Attorney Morgan Hollis is actually, I work underneath him, he's sort of been the lead on this. He's talked with Director Marshant a lot, he's been in touch with legal. Legal is actually the one that drafted most of this document where, and everybody's in agreement that this is, this is the document we should go forward with. So there's, but he's, he's sort of been the lead on that, but I will say that there's, the city seems to be in agreement that this is the proper use of the property and that it's been cleared now and it, it does look better than it was. It's, it was a significant cleanup from what it was.
And I would, yeah, and I want you to know that I don't wanna put anybody in the penalty box for the cleanup, you know? Well, you know, that's another matter. But I think everybody should know, any type of, any type of construction or anything else like that, including parking lots and other different things, we do have municipal procedures in place and that is getting the proper permits. And when you get the proper permits, it goes before other boards and you petition those other boards and then cuts a lot of chase that we're chasing our tail with right now. And this is why—
I will say that this lease is conditional upon getting all approvals.
But the problem is he's already there.
Right. But with my diatribe, I didn't want to, yes, Alderman Cleat.
No, and I agree with you. And I would have no problems if you wanted to, if you would be so inclined to table this and that we ask Mr. Forsier to consider moving all of his— of his, his items and so on, and that working on to find out whether or not we can do that. But I also understand, if the board feels that this is setting up a precedent, I also understand that if they, if you, as a, as a board, feel that this is just a little, too little, too late, I can also understand that, and I respect your opinion as to however you want to handle this situation.
Yeah. Alderman Dowd.
I was just going to say that this is also a sign of the Board of Public Works appears on their budget, budget, on their meeting on 6/27.
Which is why I thought it would be tabled, yeah.
So, they probably will come back and say no, but perhaps it would be better to table it until we get that ruling, as in other items that go to other committees or other departments, we wait for their input to come back, and then make a decision. I understand that all the ducks are in a row to say no, because several other places have asked for this before, and they've all been told no.
All right, so a motion to table would have to come from one of the committee meetings, and I know it's a non-debatable motion, but where it's not from a committee member...
That wasn't a motion, that was just a...
A suggestion. And I agree, a motion to table probably, and let the Public Works, you know, look at that, at that particular time. But allow me to sweeten the pot, let's look at the gist of this. We have a private business that wants to expand, whether he's in the right location or not, I'm not his business. But he's petitioning free parking on the city, okay? With what?
I agree.
We're not getting any permit fees, we're not getting anything. What he intends to do, and it was kind of brazen, like I said, I don't want to throw him in the penalty box.
No.
I mean, he did do a lot of work that is clean, and I understand that, you know? And I compliment that, it does look nice. But however, you know, in looking at it, maybe there might be a better way to come up with this, you know, maybe to sweeten the pot, maybe try to get a permit to lease the spot or something, or something. But then again, I understand, Attorney, can you bring up and just go up a little bit? Had, yeah, not.
Hold on.
Yeah, just, just click and drag. If, yeah, drag it again, please, and, all right, bring it over here to a bit, up just a little bit, no, the other way, the other up.
The other up.
No, yeah, yeah.
No, towards, towards the park.
No, yeah, you, you, oh, boy, here we go.
There you go, well, that's easier to see.
And looking at it, the city, just for clarification, the city, in order to increase parking for fun things such as the ball games and stuff like that, did try to get a little off, and so what they did is the city took some of its own land, and that's what that is.
All the way down and around, yes.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Forsier is, if he has trucks there over the weekend, and that's the busiest time for the park, is that the best betterment for the city?
May I?
Okay, Alderman Cleat and Alderman Jettie.
I just want to add one thing. The difference here is, while this is city property that abuts him, currently, there is no parking on that side of the street, so he's not taking any recreation parking. He's just taking that piece of land that's closest to his building. He's still going to leave some green, he's still, there's still be no parking on that side, if that be the way the planning board wants to go and so on. So he's taking the piece that kind of like abuts his land, and he's, he's going to create parking, there'll be no pavement, there'll be no, because of runoff and so on in the park. So just to clarify that, he's not taking any recreation parking away from that existing. Now, if the city had decided that they wanted to pave that part or create parking, that would be the city's decision to make it, but I don't believe that they'd be able to do parking without hitting his property. So that's, that's part of the...
Alderman, I have Alderman in the queue, and then I'll come back to you. Alderman, Jettie?
So, I'm, I'm uncomfortable, I feel like I don't have enough information, I'm uncomfortable postponing indefinitely. I feel like, like there's, you know, we ought to have somebody from the, from the city, I don't know if it would be Director Marchand or someone else from, from the city that would, you know, could kind of speak to the issues that you've raised. And also, I, I know that there is a lease that was prepared by our legal department, so...
License.
A license prepared by our legal department, so, you know, that kind of sounds like, like, like it's, it's legal, but I'm wondering, you know, if, isn't this a type of subdivision? You know, shouldn't this be going before the planning board or the zoning board? You know, it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of ifs here that, that I feel uncomfortable approving it, and I feel uncomfortable, you know, killing it. So I would, I would move to...
You got to make a decision.
No, I don't have to make a decision, because I can move to table it.
Yes, I, I'm not going to tell you not... Yeah, I think others would like to have further discussion, but I think a motion to table would be in order. So if the gentleman wants to hold on the motion to table...
I don't mean to cut off debate.
Would be, would give everybody their due time to discuss this. Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Alderman Dowd.
I'm just going to say, if there's, and it's been a while since I've been on that street, but if there's no parking on that side of the street all the way down, this, this flies in the face of, of that no parking, because it, it would be, you'd basically be parking, because the way I see it, that's going to be accessed from that side of the building onto, onto that street, and there is no other access, because there's no parking on that side. I don't know, can't tell if there are other driveways, but, but the, the other, the other thing is that the, the, the street department's the one that has control over streets, that's why I went to the BPW, Board of Public Works. And there are no other letters in the file, pro or con, so to your point, you should have more data, but in my years of experience, if I had to guess, it's going to be denied.
Alderman Cleat.
Again, if that's, you know, the, the will of the board, I completely understand. But let me just explain one other thing, they won't, the only way they'll be coming off into that parking space is from their current driveway. They will not be bringing this all the way to the, the edge of the street, there will still be some greenery, I believe that was part of his agreement, is that he would plant some kind of shrubs and so on along that way, creating a, up against that no parking zone. So he, he will just have from his, he will just have from his, his building enough width and so on to bring his trucks into it. It will not go to the edge of the street. So if the city, and, and his agreement is that he would beautify, he would put in shrubs and so on of such. But again, I still, if, if the board is to, to kill this or to do what they want to, I completely understand.
Right, and if I may add just my last two, my last two cents, we are talking about a municipal park.
Yes.
Artillery Lane is part of the park.
With one address on it.
So this is commercial trucks in a park. I know we have the piped and railing and, so, delaying, and, I mean, admittedly, we need to pore over this and really look at it upside down, inside out, and everything else like that, and I would, again, I agree with Alderman Jettie, I would take greater comfort with that, you know? But we can go with that at, at the time.
And if I just...
Yes, Alderman Cleat.
In, in complete agreeance of commercial vehicles coming into this park, there are, I believe, one or two addresses that are actually on Artillery, the other ones are, as you saw, his was Merrimack, the others are Amherst Street and so on. These trucks will still continue to go in, because he has that driveway, and he will still have trucks, he may have maybe one, two more at most, but he will still have these commercial vehicles coming into Artillery Lane at that point. And the truth be told, as I said, I believe there are only two addresses on Artillery, the rest are Amherst, Merrimack, et cetera. So just, but it is a park recreation, and again, you, I believe the, the board would do the right thing, so whatever the board does, I, I will support.
Alderman Schmidt, yes.
You just said that he still has to drive in onto Artillery Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
You see that driveway that's alongside his building?
Uh-huh.
That's where he parks his trucks and so on. He's still parking his trucks, he has landscaping trucks, they're not very large, so if you, if you brought it to the parcel portion of it, right there, exactly, that's where his driveway is. He has a current driveway there.
Yes.
And it's not accessed from any other place but Artillery?
No, you can't, I don't believe you can access it from Merrimack, I believe that you have to access it from Artillery. And he usually actually comes in by, when I've seen him come in, I've seen him come in through the home and area, I've not seen him come in from sergeant, but he may, it may have just been me. Yep. So you can see, there's no, it's right, yeah, that's where his driveway is, right there. He has no access to it from, from anything except Artillery. And his warehouse, the reason why he wants this, is that's where, do you see where the black square is there that your, your pointer is on right now? Yes, that is kind of where his warehouse and a lot of his stuff come out, and he has a little bit of a loading dock, just pass that into the white area. And I think, Alderman O'Brien, you probably saw that when you were there.
Right.
So the little bit of green that you can see there is where he's going to be doing the planting, right there, that little strip of green there, into there, yes, that's where he would be doing planting, the length of that.
Can I show you some points of my homework? Okay, keep that highlighted, right? Let's look up towards the north, up top. No, 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 just drag it, click and drag. We see fencing and other different things, it's, it's a...
Right.
There's, there's a big issue over there too, as well. Now, granted, what we see here, let me give you the usual caveats, it's not 100%, it might be five feet, 10 feet, inches, but it's pretty much where, where the lines are. Any other further discussion?
I've said my piece, thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, if Alderman Jettie makes the motion to table, the motion to table is a motion of higher priority, and supersedes Alderman Schmidt's motion. So the chair recognizes Alderman Jettie.
I move that we table this until, until the Board of Public Works reviews it, and we can revisit it at our next meeting.
Okay, the motion is to table. Any discussion on the motion? There is none, so, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none, motion to table carries. Still on, we're not going to remove anything from the table, we still have pending 019036. General discussion? Anybody have any general discussion before the board? Public comment? Seeing none, remarks by the Alderman? Alderman Cleat?
Back. Thank you very much, I appreciate the tabling, and Alderman Jettie, I appreciate you bringing that motion forward, to at least give the Board of Public Works, and because it is a recreation area, I think that they really should be involved in any kind of decision-making. I do have one quick question, this will not go to the planning board under any circumstances, just Public Works, is that correct? From what I'm reading here, it looks like it's just...
Right, it is slated, from what I see, to appear Public Works. It may get assigned, I don't know from this point.
And whatever decision...
I will follow up.
And whatever decision either boards make, I, you know, I completely understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other, you're welcome, Attorney, thank you. Any other motion, and remarks by the Alderman? There's, okay, seeing none, no need for non-public session. Alderman Jettie?
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pounce, seeing none, motion to adjourn at 2024, we are adjourned. That's it.